Good evening, Holliston. Welcome to the July 12, 2021 Select Board Meeting. We are going to get started right out of the gate with an update on the process to date on the hiring of an Assistant Town Administrator. This is a new position for the town of Holliston. It's a great complement to our new Town Administrator. We're very excited about this position. And I'm going to let Travis provide an update on the hiring process again as it's gone to this point.
Great. So obviously through the budget process, we discussed this is not an increase to head count. It's one, a little bit of feedback that we got, but this is a reimagining of a existing position and due to retirement became open. Position was created and posted on internally our website, the MMA Municipal Jobs Page in May. It was a soft deadline of June 18th to apply. We did receive 25 candidates at that time. Reviewed those for applicability to the job description, resulted in eight candidates with the experience that matched the J, excuse me, the job description. Reviewed those and narrowed it down to five candidates to bring into the screening committee. Screening committee was made up of Dr. Susan Cusco, Superintendent, Holliston Public Schools, obviously schools and HR background. Chief Matt Stone for Public Safety. Mary Bosquet on the finance and benefits side. Mark Frank, the Rec Director for the Culture and Recreation Aspect. Chris Mayo, the IT Director for Information Communications. And then Karen Sherman, the Town Planner, representing the land use departments. Those interviews were conducted of those five candidates on June 23rd and 24th, and three candidates were passed the second round. The second round was held on July 7th. And thank you to Town Resident Austin Faison, Town Manager, another town well versed in what we're looking for here. Tina Heinz, Select Board Chair, and myself reviewed those three candidates and clearly identified the candidate that we have here tonight to answer any questions you may have. I'll say that both rounds, we asked the initial screening committee and then the second round as well to review the candidates based on educational background, prior work experience, technical qualifications, verbal communications, candidate enthusiasm, knowledge of organization, team building and interpersonal skills, initiative, time management, constituent services, and then overall impression and recommendation. After that, I did the reference checks and provided some additional feedback through that to the Select Board. If there's any questions on the hiring process, otherwise I can bring in the candidate.
John and Ben, do you want to clarify anything or have any follow-up questions?
Nope, I'm good right now. I'm fine.
Okay. Yeah, would you please come in?
Absolutely. It's like a game show. All right.
So we're happy to welcome Jennifer Warren-Dyne for her interview with the Select Board. Nice to see you again, Jennifer.
Thank you. Nice to see you. Good evening, Board Member.
I'll introduce you to our Clerk, John Cronin.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening.
And our Vice Chair, Ms. Sarah.
Hi, good to meet you.
And you've met Travis.
Yes.
And then probably some familiar faces in the crowd behind you, but it's a gentleman.
There are.
Lots of cameras, I don't know if you want to look back there again. So I had the pleasure of meeting you and interviewing you in the second round. I'm thrilled to be at the table tonight.
Thank you. Thrilled to be here.
Yeah, and I appreciate that you've come in and thanks for that. So what I, what we're going to do is ask some questions. John and Ben have now had the pleasure of meeting you. They have some questions they'd like to have you address. I will then follow up and then I will turn to participants on the Zoom call.
Sure.
See if they have any questions.
Sure.
Participants here in the room as well.
Sure.
And then we'll come back for a final statement or two. Are you comfortable with them?
I am. That's okay.
Okay, so I'm going to turn to the Clerk first, John Cronin, for questions that you could ask.
The Clerk first. It starts out here. Sorry. Good evening. Nice to meet you.
Thanks.
I have a few questions. I will tell you upfront, I will, I'm going to pose my questions in a bit of a stressful format just to try to get you to think a little quickly on your feet and give me a sense of how that goes, okay? So just putting that out there right up front. First of all, part of this job, as Tina had laid out, is you'll be the Human Resources Director for the Town, which is a new position, as well as the Public Information Officer. In that case, you're likely to encounter some things that the town has either not encountered before or has not really adequately dealt with. So let me give you, first of all, a question regarding HR policy. Have you seen the HR policies of the town of Holliston?
So the policies are very difficult to find on your website. That was one of the first things that I noticed.
What would you expect to see in an HR policy?
So I would expect to see everything from attire to code of conduct to sexual harassment to inclusionary statements, and then some benefit, benefits information, kind of a one-stop shopping, omnibus sort.
Have you written such a policy?
Not in HR, but I have written other comprehensive policies in my career.
Because you're currently working in a town nearby.
Yes.
And have you edited or updated said policy?
The components of it, so certain piecemeal components of it. But that town as well needs to undergo a comprehensive review of their policies, which has been given to the HR Director.
Okay. Oh, you were not the, you didn't have this role there?
Correct.
Got it, okay. If you have this job, where would you be sourcing your understanding of what would make a good HR policy?
Sure. So I don't believe in recreating the wheel whatsoever. I think that there's a lot out there to look for. So I would look to other communities, mostly in Massachusetts. I would want to apply Massachusetts law, look to the Massachusetts laws, look to other communities that are similar composition, and then look internally here, talk to people's experiences with what has gone well, what has not gone well for them, and then proceed from there.
Okay. I would like to give you a harassment scenario and tell me what you, what your general impression of the first act or the first thing that you're going to ask for, what would you do? In this case, it's an elected official. An elected official has been showing a pattern of perceived harassment towards employees. This has been going on for months. In some cases, the material could be recorded. In other words, you could go back and look at something because it's an elected official. What are some of the things that you'll be looking for or detecting to help the complainants understand that the matter was taken seriously?
Sure. So I would want to identify not only those folks that have come forward as a complaintant, but anybody else that possibly is included in that class of harassment. I would want to ask them about their experiences, what they have perceived. I would want to keep that conversation open because a lot of times people recall things after the fact.
Are you going to ask for anything in writing?
So I would defer to the complaintant on that initially anyways. I would want to establish a communication where they feel comfortable, especially coming forward against an elected official is an area where, where people are going to be have.
I'm sorry, so are they filling out a form or not?
Oh, no, I don't, I don't believe that a form is necessary initially.
Okay. So what happens next?
So then an investigation would begin. And so this is, we've done our initial intake, now we are going to start an investigation with any other folks. And now, yes, now we're at forms and documentation and seeing where that goes.
Now, what kind of conversation is it with the, does it make a difference if you're talking to an elected official versus employee or citizen with these complaints? Does it, does it matter to you?
About the person that is being complained against? Absolutely, it does.
And, and in this case, say there's some, as there always is, some vague areas and there's an outcome that says, hmm, something but not everything happened here, what happens next?
So I would then want to invoke Labor Council and make sure that we have dotted our i's and crossed our t's and get an opinion there. And then depending on who is being complained about, I would certainly want to have the Town Administrator bring it before this board.
Got it, okay. Have you worked with generating cost models or negotiations for public employee benefits packages?
No, I have not.
Do you have any experience in regionalization of services from the public perspective?
A little bit on intermunicipal agreements.
Right.
But, but not any large-scale regionalizing of a departmental position.
The reason I'm asking, Jen, is because the, the idea of any kind of benefits, health benefits, life insurance, whatever you want to call it, usually means you're, you should be talking to your peers, you should be looking at what the surrounding communities are getting and giving for benefits through collective bargaining agreements and so forth. Is that something you'd be comfortable with?
Absolutely.
Can you give me an example of maybe where you've done something like that?
Sure, so working on other, not, not benefit specific, but just working on, with other communities on what salary modeling should look like, or, you know, in terms of a regional agreement, not so much, but just in a collective bargaining agreement per se, looking at what do our neighboring collective bargaining agreements look like before we go into negotiation.
Can you give me an idea of what your first steps would be for the town of Holliston if we hire you on how to develop a public information policy? What are we lacking and where do you think we need to go?
I think your public information is fairly strong. I think that the Holliston reporter covers you well. I think that perhaps social media, good, bad, or indifferent, could be enhanced for whatever folks want to say. That is where we are seeing a lot of our interactions with the community is on social media. And I think that having, not a lot of folks go to the website, right? That's not where they're interacting with us. They're, they're interacting with us.
It's not their first choice.
It is not their first choice. Unfortunately, social media is. So we need to bring all that messaging there to social media.
What would you do?
So I have done a similar social media campaign in my current municipality. We started with something that was black and white, bare bones, all text, and people just aren't interacting with that. I think it starts with some color, some informational graphics that are going to draw our reader in to read what we're writing about. If it was okay with the community, I would also want to go directly into the resident groups in my official capacity and be communicating those posts there as well. But when you're talking about policy for public information, I think it's also important to target who and how is communicating that information. There should be an official protocol that press releases aren't going out without being checked and, and that they all are coming through the appropriate channels.
Is the media campaign that you talked about, is that, was that in the current role or a prior role?
Current role.
And what does the media campaign include? What comps, what performance? What did you do?
On, on social posts? Yep. So like I said, it started with all black and white. That's, that's what we were starting with. Not a lot of information is to bring more information about, we are having this upcoming forum or workshop, and here a flashy graphic that's going to catch your eye, and then also have the information and link it to more detailed information on the web. Putting out the information. If I see, I am personally on the resident forums there. If I see that there is an, I don't engage, but if I see that there is an issue that is arising that needs to be discussed, try to message it officially on, on our page.
What are you going to do on your first day on the job?
Well, my very first day on the job, I think I will want to be making those onboarding documents fillable and more user-friendly. You know, that's definitely day one, but a lot of talking and listening, and I think not only the first day, but first weeks and months are, are communicating, listening, finding out where from staff we need to, we need to move, and then putting forward concrete ideas for changes.
What will the department consider your style upon your first day? What are they going to see?
Sure. So I think that I am friendly.
Or how would you describe your style?
Sure. So I'm friendly and approachable, but I'm also very direct. I am a direct communicator. I, I often don't mince words, and, and so I think that they'll, they'll find that I'm open and fair.
What would your coworkers in your current position say about your style?
I think that they would say the same.
Okay, so thank you. Okay, so Ben, any questions?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. I'm not going to talk as much about the HR side of things. I think for me personally, the thing that I'm really interested in is your interactions with the community. I think, I just want you to elaborate a little bit more about how that sort of takes place. And I think one of the things that I'm really interested in is not just how you, with the interface being, you know, giving information to the community, but are you collecting information from the community? Are you finding that in your current, or are you doing that with the social media?
Absolutely. So, and I think that one of the things that's most interesting about this opportunity is the level of engagement that you have with your community. And watching some of your past meetings where you talked about a project, and now there's a survey, and now there are tangible results of that survey that you're bringing forward, that is very impressive. I'm excited to work on that. I would like for there to be more of that, where it is possible to get that type of feedback. I would be, depending on, on what the board and the administrator were inclined, if I am going to have office hours or listening hours, I'm certainly open to that and bringing that information forward. In fact, I think that it is important to hear what the community is saying. I also think that it's important to track in a constituent database or a resident database what types of feedback you're getting. Are we getting a lot of one person who's being very loud, or is this really an issue that is across the community that needs to be looked at?
And is the interactions that you are having, are they transactional? Are they like, are they tied to like projects, or are you doing just some outreach independently, just sort of like, you know, what, you know, surveys? Or some kind of like, you know, taking the pulse of the community on like what's important at that particular moment beyond necessarily a particular item?
So in my current role, that is not something that is, is a direction of that particular community.
Okay.
Although I do recognize that this community is very different in that regard, and I, it's something that I would love, I would love to reach out and, and to really hear people and have listening sessions.
Okay. And along that line, just to segue a little bit, you know, one of the things you had mentioned in your, I think it was in your resume, about preparing for town meeting and getting things ready for town meeting. Could you talk a little bit about that preparation that you did for town meeting? And along that line, could you describe any like interactions you had with, you know, trying to bring the public in, either answer questions or to encourage people to participate in the process? Could you talk a little more about that?
Sure. So town meeting for my current role, we begin in the fall with budget preparation, and I spend part of those conversations leading up to what the manager puts forward as her final budget. And then, then where I really step in is now how do we take that information and make it relatable to the residents who are going to be attending town meetings to know why they're voting on what they're voting for? So does that mean everything from really detailed explanations of articles that I draft so that folks can understand, you know, there's something that might sound really drastic when it's written up as a warrant article, but it's just something that is a formality? So making them understand, no, this is just accepting our Chapter 90 money this year. So from that, graphic images that we, we run a PowerPoint with graphics to go along with that. And I've done everything from drafting the warrant articles to drafting the motions, meeting with the Finance Committee and Chair of the Board of Selectmen beforehand to talk about kind of who's going to play what roles at town meeting. And then town meeting night though, it's much more, I am running around behind the scenes making sure that the audio is right and that folks have water and, and that's it.
Is the town you're in now, is that a, an elected town meeting or is it?
Open.
It's an open. So I think that's, yeah, that's pretty much all I have for questions. So thank you very much. I really appreciate you coming in and answering that question.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to circle back around to the job description so that we're all on the same page. I feel listening to you tonight, reading through your resume, your cover letter, the second round of interviews, the questions that you're asked, the answers that you were given, you provide or rather, you've addressed many aspects of what's in the job description. So the professional role that you will play, supporting the Town Administrator, the administrative role you'll play, supporting the Town Administrator, the management role you'll play in supporting the Town Administrator on a daily basis. You have addressed human resources, that is a key part of this job description, and the role that you would take on overseeing all aspects of human resource strategy and administration. You've addressed being the town's Public Information Officer and various aspects of that. One thing I haven't heard asked as a question, it's not that you didn't answer it, it just was never asked of you, is does your experience overseeing employee performance appraisals? That is another key job description that's listed for this position, so I'm wondering if you could speak to that a little bit.
Sure. So in my present community, there was no one-size-fits-all way of evaluating employees. And as soon as we hired a Human Resources Director, it was, can you come up with something that, that is going to be a baseline, tweaking that document, working with her to make sure it's really capturing, having a discussion about whether 365 degree reviews make sense or not. I think that a lot of folks aren't used to reviewing their, their coworkers and in some places their peers, and I think that there needs to be education and training about what a meaningful review looks like. We want our employees not to walk away and say, I'm, I'm perfect in every way, because none of us are, right? So what can I work on? What are specific goals and objectives for the next, you know, next year? And, and then having that, that benchmark to times to check in and tie in. And again, when I just want to step back and say, I think consistency in evaluating our employees and that everybody is treated the same is so important in HR. You don't want a disparate treatment of employees, and that's really a way that people can, can have that check in.
You've had that experience at your most recent job or previous one or?
Both.
Okay, all right. So, thank you. Before I turn to members here or on the Zoom call, I do want to ask you, do you have questions for us? We've, we've asked you quite a few. You're obviously well familiar with the job description. This is your third round of interviews. So are there, you've got full board here. Are there any questions that you would like to ask of us of what it means to come to work at the town of Holliston in this role?
Sure. So obviously the board made this a priority of creating this position, and I would like to ask the board, what do you hope to get, to get out of somebody that fills this role? What is the real number one critical path that you feel is lacking?
I will let my peers think first about it then.
That's an excellent question, as I was reading the job description sort of like the 14 times. We, we're a small town. We moved from an Executive Secretary to a Town Administrator back in the early 90s, I believe it was. We sit in that space still. We recognize the complexity of running a town doesn't, doesn't remain static. And over the last 20, 30 years, it's become more and more complex. A year ago, we hired Travis with, I can tell you with my emphasis being financial expertise. There was a major missing link. Ironically, what I learned in that process was there was a candidate in that mix who had skills that I really thought we could use. And I, I'm looking for somebody who can complement the Town Administrator's skills of financial expertise, management of departments with their own skills, namely communication, team building, analysis, and sort of outward-facing kind of a position. The Town Administrator is in town hall every day doing Town Administrator work in here. I think an assistant could be more of an outward-facing resource to the business community, citizens, and so forth. So I, when, when I hear Public Information Officer, it's not a keyboard warrior, Jen. It's somebody who is a little bit more than that. He or she becomes the voice of what, what town meeting or town hall is trying to project. So that's a big part of what I'm looking for. I also think there's a stronger need to coordinate the departments beyond the Select Board's control. Draw them in through stronger liaison and communication work. We have a decent network of liaisons, but we're all volunteers. And so anything from a full-time experience that can fortify that, we'll all be there for it, trust me. And that goes for some of the land-based departments that really, you know, could use more support. So I think that will be a compliment as well. So the human resource piece, the woman sitting behind you is probably about to, you know, light a lot of candles and do a lot of dances, because Mary's been craving the opportunity to become a town treasurer. Human resources piece takes a lot of time. So we recognize that'll consume a fair amount, because you're going to have to start building things that we just talked about. So I would say overall, it's going to be somebody who is an outward-facing communicator, a strengthening liaison, if you will, to outside as well as inside community groups, and also of course, an expert at human resources that can help alleviate the Town Administrator's need to get involved in this. Great question.
John said a lot, so I, you know, I, I definitely agree. I think the HR piece is something that we need more support. Mary's done a wonderful job, but that's not necessarily a role that should, should be carrying on in the future. But I think for me, the most important piece is really like, I look at the public interaction. I really, you know, those are the nature of my questions. And I, I think one of the things that, you know, we need to do a better job of is communicating with the public, you know, and making sure that we, and that it's a two-way street too, that we're, we're giving information to the public and we're getting information from the public. So we know what's important and what's going on and what the pulse is, and having somebody who's really keeping an eye on that, like, hey, this is something that's important and I think we need to pay attention to that isn't necessarily, that might not be on our radar, but should be. And I think that's something that I think we're, we're missing, and it's not because anybody's not trying to do that, it's just that everybody's busy, and it's not something that has been able to be a priority because it's third or fourth on the list, but it is, especially in positions like ours, which are by their nature political positions, where we listen to voters, and we want to listen to voters and make sure that their, their voices are heard so we can be better public figures and elected officials and everything. So I think that's the most important thing for me that I've got to add.
For me, for sure, it is to strengthen our focus on resident and community partners. And parallel to that is a dedicated position to advance the needs of one of our greatest assets, our employees. And I think that those two in parallel, but with this position connecting the two, is where we're really going to be strongest in the future. We have, we have fantastic community support, community involvement and engagement, but we have a lot of priorities and needs that need to be addressed. We have fantastic town employees. I often hear how great our town hall is and how great our employees are. There was just a compliment handed to the Police Department on, from the farmer's market yesterday, which was on Sunday morning, about how well they handled the parking situation for the benefit of, of somebody, a resident of the community coming to the farmer's market. So we have great on both sides, and I'm really excited about having this new position so the two can be connected again. I just think that makes a much stronger Holliston. So that's what I'm looking forward to the most. Do you have any other questions for the board?
I don't think I do at this time.
All right.
I do have a question, Travis.
Sure.
Leaving the job description, it's pretty well-written, it's defined. Do you envision any cost training for core duties, core duties that you perform that aren't necessarily expressed in the job description? Specifically, the compilation of the town warrant twice a year, development of budgets, things like that. That's capital budget. Just wondering if that's an area you see cost training being built.
Yes, I think Jen's background, especially the legal background in terms of the amount of work that goes into developing the warrant, I think is going to, would be an excellent addition. I think there's a lot of opportunities to sort of divide and conquer on a lot of things that, that go to the Town Administrator by default. I think certainly, you know, there will be opportunities for especially certain areas of, of the budget or, or any type of other work that goes through in either warrant. But I think development of, you know, the articles that we especially know are going to be flashpoints, to have more than one person who has the, you know, the prime focus on those will be a benefit overall to town meeting in those instances, but that's just an example.
And if you, for example, took a long road trip and couldn't make it back because, I don't know, a car you were driving broke down, you couldn't be at work for a couple of days, she'd be sitting in for you in town to check.
I made it back four times that car broke down.
That would be the idea, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. So Jen, I'm going to do the turn first with the Zoom call, and then is there anybody, anybody here in the room who'd like to ask a question? Okay. So is there anybody on the Zoom call who'd like to ask Jen a, a question as a part of this, this interview process? You are welcome to raise your hand and ask your question or share your comments. Okay, well, seeing none on the Zoom call, I will ask anyone here in the room, any questions from the folks here? Okay. So that wraps up the interview part, portion of tonight. So it will come as no surprise to you that, you know, this is a transparent, open process, so the board will discuss the, the overall interview process to this point. I think Travis, you were comfortable with ending the time with Jennifer now?
Yep.
Is that what you were considering?
I'll communicate with Jennifer after the meeting.
All right. Well, I just want to thank you for coming.
Pleased to meet you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you very much.
I appreciate you.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate you coming.
Be careful, they're wired up, they can't go far.
Very interesting.
Talk to them.
We're each other, is that what you mean to say?
Yes.
Okay. So Travis, what you were envisioning was a discussion and you were looking for the board's direction on, on how to move forward. So I think what we'll do is just sort of get a sense of consensus, if there is one, of what the board would like to do next. So I'm interested to hear what John and Ben are thinking at this point in time. You've heard the process up since tonight and then you obviously have the interview just to sleep, about thirty minutes with Jennifer, so.
Thirty minutes, yeah. Um, I, well, first of all, before we got here today, Travis gave us a very comprehensive update about the work done to date to recruit the candidates, interview the candidates, bring her forward. She's off, she said this is her battleground, so clearly there's been some betting going on. But, um, I liked her, I thought she presented very professionally, very sound candidate, great background, uh, good upside. Um, I look at these hires, especially this particular one, as being unique to Hollison. We never had an assistant town administrator before, um, and it's an important hire. It's the first time the community has seen her. I observed Tina that we have seven people on the Zoom call tonight, not exactly a, a large portion of Hollison residents on the Zoom, may, maybe others watching. So, I'd like the, uh, chance to, um, wait on this, uh, put it off for a week and, uh, look forward to bringing it forward to motion as early as next week. But other than that, uh, um, very much enjoyed the meet, uh, the discussion with her and the responses to the questions.
So, just to circle back around on that, you, you're wanting a chance for the community to, to weigh in?
Yeah, transparency, get, get their feedback, uh, people who weren't on this call tonight and so forth, yep.
Is there more information that you are looking for? Are you satisfied with the information that you would need to make a decision?
What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna square up the results of her interview with her, uh, application and her resume, so I'll, I'll do that after this meeting.
Okay.
Um, I, um, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with whatever, uh, everyone else decides, but at the same time, I'm not, I, I looked at her resume, I looked at her, um, at the process and, um, I, I'm comfortable with things as they've turned out. I'm comfortable and trusting the people to make a, an informed decision. And while I, you know, I certainly understand the idea of, um, waiting a week, I'm not necessarily sure we need to. Um, I, um, I, I feel the process was, you know, we, we, we had a lot, a lot of opportunity to interact and I, I feel that, you know, certainly this is something that's a little bit different. Um, but, you know, I, I certainly can understand John's position, looking to see, you know, get that community feedback and looking to see that people want to interact or ask some questions or anything like that, that they're, that they have the capacity to do so. But I, I think it was a, you know, I, I applaud, uh, the, the, the hard work that people put in to get to this point, so, so, to get the candidates. It sounded like there was a lot of candidates that came forward and, and, uh, I think she presented very well. I, I enjoyed talking to her. I think she knows an awful lot about what's going on. She handled John's, uh, machine gun approach with, uh, with his questions, uh, very, very, very well, um, I felt. So, um, you know, I, I, I leave it to the chair to, to, to tell. But, um, I, I, I think we, I'm, I'm comfortable waiting tonight, but that's interesting.
Okay, so that's interesting. So, we, we have a difference of opinion, although a little bit more flexi- not more flexibility, but, um, you are comfortable, I'm understanding.
I'm comfortable waiting tonight if that's the decision of the chair, but I'm also like, I'm not gonna, if, if you wanna wait, that's fine too.
Okay, so I, I feel a little differently. Um, I feel like we, as a board, with Travis, we have a common vision and we've been consistent in, in how we've communicated that vision and how we've expressed our, our goals here. And, um, I, I think this hire, I think Jen, um, is, is significant steps towards accomplishing that vision. Um, I'm very excited for Jen to join the town of Hollison. I, I am ready to vote tonight for, um, the appointment of, of Jen. Having said that, this needs to be a fully confident three oh vote. That is how we move forward best. We don't have consensus tonight to make that decision. We have, uh, consideration for another week, for the opportunity for the community or others to provide feedback. Um, on the one hand, I think that's a very reasonable request. I don't necessarily agree with it in that I'm, you know, excited for Jen and hopeful confidence that she is the right candidate for the town of Hollison, but I am respectful of the opinions of my board members. So, without that consensus tonight, Travis, I'm gonna ask that we revisit this next week with, um, the potential for a motion to appoint Jen at that time.
Great, I will do so.
Jen, do you want to add to the conversation?
Nope, I will add that, uh, at the top of next week and communicate that to Jen.
Okay, and on behalf of the board, may I speak for the board and say that, you know, she is a very strong candidate and we are very pleased with the interview.
Yes, I was, I was very happy with her.
Well, more importantly, you can add, there were, how many candidates applied for the job?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, how many were screened?
Five.
And how many, so five, from the five, she became the one?
Yes.
What's the difference between one and two?
I would not say, um, I would say.
The number of the one?
Duh.
Yes, duh.
Saying the runner up close to her in performance?
Yeah, I guess that's the question, right.
I think Jen separated herself from the field.
Right, yeah, so there is no, there is no sense that we, we go backwards at all?
I don't believe, no.
Yeah, strong candidate, got it, okay, that's important enough.
Travis, thanks for bringing this to the board tonight and thank you for bringing it back to us. Please bring it back to us in a week. Okay, so with nothing else to do there on the agenda, item number one, we're gonna move on to the bond anticipation note and I believe we have Mary Bocce at the join us at the table. The soon to be sole, sole destroyer of the town treasurer. Treasurer?
Lonely town treasurer.
Might be able to, might be able to find the bottom of her desk someday. So, uh, we did a band sale. I'm done, just introduced the topic, I didn't say the full agenda. This is for a bond anticipation note, um, we're looking tonight to sign the note and disclosure for well number five for the new water treatment facility. Correct, thank you. We sold the bands on, um, July eighth, we had four bids. The, um, first for eight million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, we received premiums of a hundred and fifty-one thousand, which allowed us to, um, resize the, uh, offering to five, uh, to eight million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. The net interest cost is point one eight eight nine three, which is extremely low. Can you say that one more time? Point one eight eight nine three. And the, uh, note rate is two percent. So, there is a lot of paperwork, um, and a large motion to be read.
Is now the time to ask your question?
Sure.
Um, yeah?
Yes.
Um, when did we get our AAA status, what day?
Uh, the week before that, June thirtieth.
Did the AAA status save us money on this note?
Usually it saves us about ten basis points.
The real savings on, on the, this, uh, will be with the long-term borrowing. So, for a ban, which is essentially how we, we flow the cash flow to do the project before we borrow for the long term, so it's a ban followed by a bond, the bond is where we're gonna see real savings over the life of it, of the twenty years. Um, and on eight, eight point three million, if that what, if that is what ends up being a long-term borrowing based on the basis points that Mary mentioned, you're looking somewhere between fifty and a hundred thousand dollar savings over the life of that bond. Uh, on a project larger, let's say a hundred million dollar high school project someday, um, you know, then you're into millions of dollars of savings.
Got it.
And all, that's what the market is doing on that particular day too.
Right, that's based on today's market, right? Three oh eight, I mean, much larger fluctuations, so, um, but there are, you know, some savings here from the AAA on the ban, but the, the real savings will be that bond.
Okay, so you are looking for a motion from the board? Uh, well, John has a whole thing you have to read. Have the paper, you have the time, you have the.
You think a motion to appoint the chair as the clerk for the next five minutes?
No.
All right, ready?
Sorry.
All right, vote it, well, select board, right at the top.
Hi, the clerk of the select board of the town of Hollison, Massachusetts, certified that a meeting held with the board on July twelfth, twenty twenty-one, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which forum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record that the board in my custody voted to approve the sale of eight million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, two point zero zero percent general obligation bond anticipatory notes, also known as the notes, of the town dated July twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, and payable July twenty-second, twenty twenty-two to BNY Mellon Capital Markets LLC at par and accrued interest of any plus a premium of one hundred fifty-one thousand, six hundred seventy-seven dollars and eleven cents. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale, sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated July first, twenty twenty-one, and a final official statement dated July eighth, twenty twenty-one, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer B and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and the select board B and here are and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure and undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule fifteen C two dash twelve in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuing federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deemed sufficient or such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the notes to comply with relevant security laws. Further voted that each member of the select board, the town clerk and the town treasurer B and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, time, date and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours and or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located or if applicable in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the attorney general as set forth in nine forty CMR twenty dot, twenty-nine point oh three, section two B, at least forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays and legal holidays, prior to the time of meeting and remain so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the notes were taken in executive sessions, all in accordance with general law, chapter thirty A, sections eighteen through twenty-five as amended, dated July twelfth, twenty twenty-one, clerk of the select board John Cronin.
Mary, I will ask you, did we conform with the notice to post as, uh, stipulated here? So, set motion red, I'll make the motion.
Okay, do you have second?
I will second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Side away.
Okay, so, let's start with.
Three copies.
Yes, three. Next one coming through is the note itself.
Did you yell at them about the color of the?
Oh, yes. Everybody have a black wooden pen?
Don't use the wrong pen then.
Uh-huh, purple, thank you.
Yeah, my black pen, it's hard to resist it.
No, that's just the note. The next one coming down is the signature, no litigation, official statement certificate.
For those joining us for the Nine Green Street presentation, we will be doing that right after this, uh, very important, uh, signing process.
The next, next one is significant against disclosure certificate.
Very similar.
They're called the same thing. So, we can't do it with chronic rates. Your for eight million dollars. And the last one is the tax certificate. That's it?
So, that's a hundred and fifty-something thousand, that's the cost of the note in practice?
Um, it's interesting, we have asked to, um, pretty much get the bid, or we can use it for issuance cost, which we did, we used it to resize the loan. We have about nine hundred and fifty dollars left over to apply towards the first interest payment.
Can you, um, can you go to the long-term bond before this ban expires?
No.
So, it has to be a year and a day from now?
Correct. And that, we'd like to wait until the projects are finished, so we don't always borrow.
Should I, uh, take a moment to, uh, ask this?
I was just gonna say, before we let you go, Mary, I think we probably have some words for you, big project. Oh, hold on, and thank you for the work that you did to prepare. We know that the town of Hollison's been waiting a long time for this water treatment facility and I think this is a huge step forward and I think that you are the quiet behind the team's engine that makes all of this happen with much assistance from the town administrator, but you've been working on this for a very long time and I just wanna thank you for that and, and congratulate you for getting to this milestone here, which I know is a significant one. Thank you.
AAA.
Yes, finally.
Only way to fly.
That's right, thank you and.
Nice job, thank you.
It's been a pleasure.
Yep, great.
You're welcome.
Nice job, and.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Thanks, Mary.
All right, so that closes the bond anticipation notes discussion. We're gonna move on then to a presentation from Par Corp and we have Al. Al, I'm gonna say Hanson, but I, it's Hanson, yeah, where my husband used to work, it was my pod. Al Hanson from Par Corporation has a presentation prepared for.
Open the public hearing as well, since we posted it that way, specific to, um, just the, the, a budding list and all that.
Is that in the packet?
Nope.
So, uh, I'm gonna.
I realized I didn't put it here, so I'm just making sure we understand that.
That's a clerk job to do, so.
Yes, it is. I'll make a motion, open hearing relative to the presentation for Par Group on the future use of nine group three.
Al, do you need any help setting up for another minute?
No, I'm all set.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm excited, I won't move.
Me too.
I'm gonna put it here because it would be easier for them to see.
I think Christian, you said sometimes that doesn't show up, so he has the board.
Why don't you take a look and do you like it?
He's got it both ways. Looks great. The world can see it.
Makes sense to me, yeah.
Okay, you want Al talking into that?
Yeah, that's okay. Um, let me know if you can, here.
Okay, so we're gonna allow Al to take over for a little bit, you get to drive this, uh, bus for a little bit with your presentation?
Feel free to interrupt or ask questions.
Go do, okay, go for it.
Okay, um, I'm gonna give an overview of the process since we've been involved for the last six or seven months, uh, on this Nine Green Street property. It's shown here.
I'm gonna interrupt you for one second and just let folks know that we're joined by James Keith, who's been pivotal in this process as well. He's been at every step of the way and, and leading the meetings, organizing the information, getting us to where we are tonight. James is here in the room as well and is also, I believe, James, on the spot, but available for questions if they come up.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm sorry, Al, please.
Absolutely, okay, so the property, uh, is downtown. It's located at Nine Green Street, which is a dead end street off of Washington here. Um, I have put together just a quick summary of the process that we've gone through because it was, um, it's a fairly unique site in that it's about a third of an acre, it's quite small. It's occupied mostly by a large building that is a manufacturing building that has had a release of chlorinated solvents in the past. So, there is some chlorinated solvent groundwater contamination emanating from the site roughly in this direction. Uh, because of the way chlorinated solvents behave in the environment, it's sumped down into the water column to the aqua tar, that was bedrock, and it can migrate and merge in any direction from the site. So, one of the conditions in the RFP is that we maintain the slab, the building, the base slab, to prevent any access to the subsurface contamination, which is residual in the soil as well as the groundwater. So, that was one of the site development constraints that we have to deal with.
Is the slab intact though?
It is intact, yes. I mean, there's a stump that will be sealed. There will also be a, uh, deep catch basin stump when we handle the site groundwater. We have to be very careful not to encourage groundwater infiltration to migrate the plume, step to downgrading properties. So, it's one of the things that we're working on with Board Environmental here, here LST. I'm a licensed site professional, so I understand the same issues that Lord is dealing with. So, we're communicating on those issues. Um, we also have to maintain access to the budding property owners. Budding properties, I think it's a small land survey office here.
Budding properties, I think it's a small land survey office here, and there's the Superec parking, the back lot, so we need to tie into existing graves, so we can't make any substantial grave changes. We have a connector off of Washington Street, so we've kind of factored that into our design, and we have one-way traffic going out to this area and then exiting onto Green Street, coming out to the, uh, traffic signal at Washington Street.
Is there a septic system on site, and will that remain intact?
There are three septic system components that I'm going to show you in the next board, so, yes, we'll get into exactly what I'm going to do with that. Um, let's see, we also have, there's a stream right in the back of the site, so we have already flagged the wetlands, and we will fill through a, probably a request for dissemination of culpability, I think is what would, would fit here, but we'll deal with the conservation commission directly before we go into the, the next phase. One of the other considerations is, um, for the foreseeable use of the site, and in addition to the constraints that we've already talked about, um, the environmental contamination also raises, uh, long-term liability questions for prospective developers, so, um, my take on a, on a small site like this, with the perception that environmental liability would be long-term, is that there aren't a lot of developers who would want to jump into that role on the site, so the town has done that. The town qualifies a third-party innocent defense, so you have protection under the regulations, because you didn't cause the contamination, you've taken possession of the property, and you wanted to develop it for a beneficial reuse, so you do have liability protection under the MDP regulations. Some of the goals that were established upfront in the project with, with James and with Travis and Tina, we've looked at, um, complying with the green initiatives of the town. So, the town has indicated a preference to be green, in the way of use, having, uh, EV charging stations, for example, as part of the parking spots that would be put on the property. We have solar, so solar lighting would be part of the next phase of the project, so what I'm gonna talk about tonight is the demolition aspect, but in the spring, we're probably looking at putting out a separate set of documents for redevelopment of the property and incorporating these green initiatives. We've got things like bike racks, we're encouraging public access, those are all gonna be shown in subsequent slides. I have three different concepts, concepts for the reuse of the site that we're going to be talking, uh, about at the end of this presentation. Amenities, we, we have three or four or five different amenities, again, that'll be shown on the top slides, but we're talking about shelters, we're talking about possibly a game table, we have, um, picnic tables, a kiosk, some kind of a shelter, that sort of thing, so those are the things that we've done and looked at to date. The estimate for the demolition of the building, which would take place late summer, early fall, with a completion date estimated in October and November of this year, is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, a lot depends on the timing of the demolition contract, if, for example, it were in the winter, typically is a little bit lower, because the demolition contractors aren't as busy. I think we're somewhat, uh, at the mercy of the other demolition projects that are going on, and what demolition contractors are gonna be available when this project is gonna be done. So, I think the more flexibility we can give them in terms of time for performance, instead of a, it probably is a thirty-day job, but if we give them sixty days, we might open it up to more bidders and get more favorable pricing, so I'm thinking we might go to a sixty-day bidding process. But I have sort of a bidding process here, here, and some estimates on, on the time. This is a blow-up of, of the plan, and you could see most of, this is, this heavy gas line is the limit of the property, so you can see a good portion of the property is occupied by the building itself. This building will be demolished, I don't know if you can see, John, the flooded areas here, but these are all, these three areas, uh, there's a pump chamber and a holding tank for sewage inside the building underneath the foundation, so this would be removed, and that would be filled, backfilled, and we would seal up that portion of, of the foundation. This, I believe, is the abandoned septic system, and this is the more current septic system up here, so all of those would be demolished and backfilled with granular materials as part of the demolition project. We also have utilities, we have gas line out here, that would be terminated, I'm working with Eversource now to schedule the termination of the gas line that comes into the property, that would be done before the contractor comes on hopefully. We, uh, James is coordinating with the water department to get the water service cut off at the main, so we don't have a, a problem long-term, so those utilities shut offs are gonna, will occur. And we also have, um, I guess this involves, uh, the sanitary facilities, we also have a cooling line here that we're proposing to possibly use, we'll assess the condition of that cooling line, that might be the high outlet overflow from the stormwater management system to the brook. So, if you can't, if, we have a large rain, rainfall, and we have a large amount of water, we may need to overflow that stream instead of integrating it to the site. Now, are there any questions on that?
Can I understand, I think I'm asking, may I just tell a lot a little bit more clearly, is the access off of Washington Street, is that now owned by the town?
It's part of the parcel, yes. I think this, this, here it's labeled a right, a right of way here, but I, I believe that's part of the parcel, that's what it was, that's what was shown.
So, theoretically, the town owns that going forward, the town's gonna be filing that, and will be responsible for sanding and salving and all that good stuff, is that right, Chris? Theoretically?
If you go back to an eighteen fifty-five P E, it's split up between four properties.
And we'll just talk about that access, will we?
Yeah, and the access, Nine Green Street has a right of way, the three properties own the driveway. So, the driveway is twenty-two feet in length, and goes right to the creek where it is open. And the way the deed reads is, after the driveway, up to the Feldhines is split between the brick building and Superec. From the Feldhines property to the creek is split between Superec and the Feldhines.
And this deed is long before that building was built?
That building was built after that. Originally, the property owner was the creek before, and when the bank was there. Then, when the property covered over the creek, while the town covered over it and needed to cover it, that's when they changed the lines a little bit, and put in those granite posts to mark where the property lines exist today.
Is this a concern to you, or are you just looking to clarify the, uh, yet?
Well, yeah, things are concerned to all three property owners. The building has the right of way, but the building does not own it as a property. The right of way was put back in, and the right of way is actually over the creek, 'cause where my property marker ends is right where the dumpster is, but when Ray Garcia owned the building, we would use the access to the left of the dumpster, which is kind of on both of our properties, so, and at one point, he put a chain up to stop traffic from going back and forth, because a car got dented on Nine Green Street, so then he put a chain up to stop it in the access.
I remember that.
But, since he stopped using the building when he emptied it out, just through the air quality issues, I took the chain out, opened it back up.
So, I guess what I'm looking for, um, at some point, I don't, you, you give us this, Travis or somebody else, as we own the property, that we own...
Let me interrupt, please.
Only because I gave you the incorrect answer.
This is the property line right here, so this, this property terminates there, this is simply a right of way, this is the gentleman's...
Oh, so, I can only see the dark...
So, right here, that's the end of that little section of land, so it goes all the way around, and it terminates right here, and goes out that way.
So, it has access onto Green Street, obviously.
Okay, there's a right of way out to Washington Street, but this would be a one-way, in our scheme.
So, I'm just gonna ask you to introduce yourself, yeah.
Question, all right.
Okay, and you had that?
Uh, one ten, uh, one ten, yeah, one twelve, twenty, twenty eight.
Washington? Great, thank you. Okay, thank you, introduce yourself, go ahead.
Are we getting the audio, or do you need people moving closer, Christian?
Generally, we often like to...
You can get it, okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, the, you talked about the footprint of the, the building on Green Street, and uh, it starts to talk about, uh, some, some overflow, or...
This is, this is the footprint of the building, this orange square, and the property line is this heavy, uh, dash line.
Where the gas station, again, the...
The gas station, right there. And what, the line that you're referring, that you were just talking about, the cooling line, is a cooling system, uh, handle, you can see it cooling water from the old industrial operations, and then the overflow goes up to the brook. We're talking about reusing that line.
We're talking about something like...
We're, we're talking about reusing that line for stormwater, as opposed to cooling water, so when we have a deep catch basin stump, when we redevelop the site, there will be a, probably a rain guard in sorts, where we would drain the surface water down to the rain guard, and then there would be a high lock, an overflow, we drain that cooling water line, and then overflow the brook.
And that brook inside, you know, that probably goes down Central Street, and...
Goes underground right about here, and then goes back underground under Washington. Then it opens up, and it has an open broadcast for that.
No, no, you paused your questions, any other questions? Chris, do you have any for now?
Nothing, huh?
Okay, all right, Al, yeah, go ahead.
Cooling, you talked about cooling, cooling system.
No, it's probably cooling water from industrial process, it was, maybe they were cutting metal or something, and then you just cooled it off, or they had a cooling tower, and they were recirculating water to cool off a, a hot process or something. So, that cooling water would be discharged periodically to that stump, and then overflow the stream.
And that's the main issue, contaminant?
No, the contamination was caused by probably a discharge to the old septic system of chlorinated solvents, which have a, a density that's higher than water, so it's more dense than water, and it will sink in groundwater, so if it releases to the environment, it will sink and sink and sink until it hits what we call an aqua tar, bedrock, or some kind of confining layer like clay, or tight silks and so on, so that will actually migrate down. And that's what happens, this site, and then as groundwater comes through or flows to downriver progress, it picks up some of the dissolved fraction, and then contaminates groundwater that's flowing downstream, so we've got a contaminant plume that's come down into this area. Al, will you just...
I defer, go ahead, sir.
Go ahead.
Could you show me on the other, the, the photograph of the property, where the cooling is, is, is this...
That line, I'm gonna, the building is right here, and the line just flowed out to the, to the, uh, brook. The brook, uh, goes underground with the head wall here, and goes tight underground here. But that cooling water just came from, from that, is a, is a manhole right here, that took cooling water from the industrial operations, and it flowed over, the brook, the brook flows this way down here, goes underground into Washington Street. About ten feet behind the dumpster, there are a lot of the property line.
So, the brook, it's, it's along on the...
Yeah.
Al, will the property have any, um, monitoring wells?
Um, at this point, I've talked with Ralph Tele from Lord Environmental, and we're planning to protect the monitoring wells at this point, so we will have the contractor put steel sleeves around them and protect them during the demolition operations.
No additional monitoring wells required, though?
Um, I haven't been told by the LST that there would be, I don't think so, I would be, I would find that hard to believe, that they would need any additional wells. The only way they would do, would need it, would be if they wanted to do different levels within the aqua park, but that's really depends on geology, and I'm not sure, if, if he needed them, he probably would have had them by now.
Right, thank you.
There is residual soil contamination in the slab, though, and that's why we're keeping the slab in place, so we don't migrate it. And the way chlorinated solvents work is that you really wanna have the oxygen out of the groundwater, you don't wanna have fresh stormwater getting down into it, because then the reaction, the breakdown of chlorinated solvents can occur, it has to occur in an oxygen burn.
Are you qualified to tell us tonight that there's really no other purpose for that property, other than capping it, in other words, are you qualified to say you cannot build on this?
I think I'm qualified to answer the question, um, and I think I've already answered that when Tina asked the same question.
Okay.
It could be used for other purposes, but there would be a premium cost associated with that.
Yep.
We would have to either, you'd have to probably put a sub-slot depressurization system, a sub-slot emptying system, similar to a radon system, we might be familiar with that.
Yep.
Yeah, let me just pause here and say that Nine Green Street Committee that we had in place before we engaged with FAR went through the contamination, went through the work with Lord Environmental to address the contaminants and possible future use, so we have two groups that are coordinating quite well to, to make sure that we address the contamination issue that FAR, through the demolition plan and what you're proposing, but it's also supported by, um, Lord Environmental and their advice to the Nine Green Street Committee, and now through this process to FAR and to...
It is certainly the most cost-effective for the town to do it this way, and I think when you see the reuse plans that we've come up with, I think you might agree that these are some pretty good options for the town to consider. Uh, we've involved, uh, Pamela Shadley, our landscape architect, to come up with three different, uh, concepts, sketches for reuse of the site. Uh, they all are laid out fairly similarly, and we want to propose a one-way, uh, street coming across the right of way off of Washington Street into the site, and going with two-way traffic out to Green Street, with also two-way traffic coming into a parking lot that we have located pretty much in the footprint of the building, so we would actually create parking spaces within the building foundation, might extend a little bit further, uh, toward the brook. We have some evening parking stations, and we'll probably put in this area, and some solar lighting, we can get into the, the details at a later time, but this kind of gives some of the, uh, the concepts of how the traffic would flow, and how we would lay out the site. We're talking about a rain garden down here, so we would take the runoff from the site, treat the, the stormwater runoff, and have that go into a rain garden down in this area for the high outlet overflow, possibly through the, the cooling system line to the brook. The vegetation, the benches, the tables, the bike racks, all of that is kind of gonna be mixed and matched between these options. I have asked the architect to show some of the amenities, we have a bicycle ribbon rack here, and a, a bench, we'll see some more on, on the subsequent options.
Al, I think Mr. Felton has a question for you, but before you, you, um, uh, uh, answer his question, can you just identify the number of parking spots of the schemes as you go through them?
Um...
No, no. I, I believe we're looking at three to four electric charging stations, and I believe it's sixteen or eighteen spots, is that right, Al?
I think this, well, I think they all bear a little bit.
Yeah.
We don't have fifteen.
Okay.
Uh, we also have, we have three easy parking stations here, that can be adjusted, and we aren't really in the design mode for that yet, but we are thinking three or four spaces would be appropriate for the size of the lot, and it could be expanded.
It would be dependent on, uh, on what we can get through a grant, uh, opportunity as well, but, yeah.
Yeah, there are grant programs available through Eversource and other, you know, the power companies, so we would be looking into that during the...
Mr. Felton, did you have a question?
Yeah, is, is this area, is this area, we used to be part of the playground, uh...
It's across the street.
It's directly across the street from the playground, you, uh, I don't know if you can tell on this, but the, the playground area, just, you see the tennis courts here, we have the baseball diamond, we have the tennis courts, I think this is the playground that, that do, the parking space, parking right across the street. So, this, this, this concept of parking, and some of the amenities that we're providing for the community, uh, bike racks, and picnic tables, like that, um, kind of fits into this, as I understand it, the, when they have sporting events here, parking is a premium, there are, you know, double rows of parking on either side of the street, which causes traffic problems, so this kind of provides another fifteen or eighteen spaces. Um, the other thing I'll mention, that I forgot to mention earlier, was that we have a future parking expansion area here, we could actually add six more spaces if we wanted to, but, but it was decided in the discussion with town representatives, that being for the initial phase, and that as the need of, of roads for additional parking spaces, we have the ability to add them, if necessary.
Can we go back to, like, other thematic, not, we don't need to put it up or anything, I just, my question is, how long is the app, last, public last, I mean, is this something that we're gonna have to dig up and replace at some point, or...
No, I mean, the... No, I mean, the concrete is probably unwordable about ten blocks to be reinforced. I, I would be, I trust that you'd never have to replace it. And by the time you have to replace it, hopefully the contamination has degraded, so you wouldn't keep it there.
Degradation in fifty years?
Um, it, it's so variable because of the environmental conditions, but yes, it could be criticized in fifty years. It's almost impossible for them, but the concrete itself should last well. There, I think the, I think probably an associate answer is that there's very little maintenance for this. So the cap itself doesn't really require a lot of maintenance, other than maybe repaving and checking out the pavement that we're putting over it. We'll be raising it with some of the rubble from the demolitions and the concrete will probably be crushed and replaced on the property, layered in gravel and then we would be paving over the top of it. So one of the things that we would have to do is maintain the asphalt so we didn't have rainwater.
The trees don't present the same kind of effect, though, do they?
In this case, no. I don't, you know, in some cases, we have to be very careful if we do a soil cap, that we don't have the roots that are going to come down. In this particular case, there's no, no restraint on trees populated in the site. The trees don't seem to be all that sensitive to low levels of chlorinated solvents.
But was, was the question that could the trees break? What we're concerned about is breaking the asphalt. Would the tree roots break the asphalt and then create an issue? Is that the question? Complimentary to that, yes. I was just concerned that over time, as the trees grow, they would open up and present a similar situation that she just described.
I think, you know, we would be talking with our landscape architect. We wouldn't be putting, you know, a twin oak tree there that could be a hundred and fifty feet high and have.
A willow tree that loves water.
Yeah, a willow trees that just find water wherever.
I know a tree guy, so that's our options.
Yeah, our landscape architect's pretty adept at getting the right trees too. And because I'm in that industry, we would be pretty careful. Uh, this is another layout. You can see, I guess, the primary difference here, we've got a little shelter down here, which is kind of pictured in the photograph. We also have kind of a game table, which is a little different, but it's becoming more and more common these days. And that would, that game table could go any particular place that you wanted. I think the game table is here, right there. We could put picnic tables and again, I think it's just a combination of what the town would like to see. We can come up with an optimum layout and a combination of different amenities. Doesn't have to be just like any, either one of these, or the last one.
Sounds like you're going to waterproof the concrete. As a respect to, to be on a vertical wall, does it take this moment for it from the contaminant?
Well, the contamination has already migrated down into the ground pretty deep. So we aren't, there is contaminated soil underneath the slab. So we're trying not to promote large quantities. A small amount of water gets through, cracks in the concrete, that's not a problem. So we aren't really overly concerned about that. But we are concerned that we have the asphalt maintained, so we don't have a lot of freeze thaw. If you trap the water underneath in the bedding material or sub, sub base, then it could be, then you could have ice lenses and then you'd have problems. So we're trying to keep the asphalt in pretty good shape, so we have runoff into the catch basins. We can get that off the site and not create damage.
You would, you would, the asphalt would see the surface at the top. And I, I guess waterproof, but.
Well, it's by its nature because it's got asphalt in it and the hot sun, it kind of self seals. So we don't get a lot except for when it cracks, when you have large cracks in it. So we would want to seal that periodically, so that's something that we do. Um, there's one thing that I did not mention before. Again, for cost savings, we opted to retain the, the foundation wall of the building. That becomes essentially a retaining wall. Then we would then build a ramp adjacent to that so that we could safely get a ramp and comply with American Disabilities Act grades, have a ramp at a level and then a ramp to get down from the street level down to the parking level. So we're taking advantage of the, the wall that's there to serve as a retaining wall and then building our ramp next to it.
And there'll be one or two acceptable parking spots?
There'll be two. I think in most of our concepts, we've got, we've got two, so many. I think all of them have the same thing. And as close as we can to, to the ramps, we'll get access. The handicapped stay, if they walk up the ramp. Okay, and the last one, they took one of my suggestions and I, I happen to like granite block. So they threw a couple of granite blocks on here just to satisfy, yeah, I guess, the wildflowers. So this is a little bit more like where I grew up in Maine. So this is the, probably the least intense, more natural option. But again, any of the amenities can be put together into whatever the town desires under the design phase. But as of this moment, I believe we're looking and working James to get this out to bid within the next three or four weeks and get this demolition process going so that the building will be demolished and go to snow flying. I think the only adjustment I would make to the schedule, I think you mentioned it before, is to make it a sixty day period. Just open it up to more, more bidders, which might give them a sample time to get it done and they might be wrapping up.
Just to be clear, that what would be going out to bid specifically is the demo, right? Not what you're talking about in terms of the long-term use. That is a separate process and, and I think, right? So I just want to make sure I'm talking to the mic. So for everybody's recollection, the December twenty twenty town meeting got the design engineering money to do a demo plan, site plan, storm water plan. That led to the engagement with PAR. It also led to the article at the May town meeting, which led to the funding of the demo plan, which was approved at the May town meeting and that's why we're ready to go with an engagement on that based on the, the expertise of PAR, which is that we could have some savings depending on the time and, and those things. And that I think part of this, this evening is, is introducing the community to what the Nine Green Street commu-, uh, committee had, had discussed, which was a, a, a vision for the property in the future. And obviously PAR has something that people can kind of sink their teeth into at this point.
Okay, so the hundred and twenty thousand dollars that you're estimating for the total demolition, demolition cost is in the warrant article that was approved by town meeting, appropriated by town meeting?
Right, that would be, that would be within and underneath what was appropriated.
Great, okay.
I think there was a contingency there that you provided for that it wasn't in our.
Okay, um, Alex, thank you for taking the time to sit here. We're going to keep you up there a little bit longer. We have a call, we have a residence or participant on the Zoom call who'd like to ask a question. I cannot see who it is, so I'm going to let Justin bring that person in. So I'm going to ask you just to introduce yourself with your name and your address and then go ahead and ask whatever questions or share whatever comments you have, please.
Hi, good evening. This is Suzanne Adelman and I have a question.
Is your address again?
Oh, forty six. Forty six South Street.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm going to get on this a, a little bit late, but very briefly, what's the plan for the old gas station? Is that, is that not part of this plan I see, but what, is there a plan for the old gas station that's sitting there?
There is nobody in the room tonight who can speak to that specifically Suzanne. It is not a part of the, I'm not trying to, you know, shut off the question here, but.
No, that's fine.
Okay, so that lap landed, it was the zoning board of appeals. They made the, the final decision and we are where we are today based on that decision. I, I mean, I think, I think those in the room involved with the process to date would tell you that this, this improvement, as, as we're suggesting here with these drawings, will only enhance that property.
I agree.
But there's nobody here in the room, yeah, there's nobody here in the room this evening who can speak to any future plan for the old station. Yeah, yeah, exactly. It's still privately owned, John's pointing it out, so.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm sure this is going to be a big improvement and I vote for flowering trees in the springtime.
I am making notes. Suzanne votes for flowering trees in spring.
Love those flowering, flowering trees in the spring are just gorgeous. So that's my vote. That's my vote.
All right.
All right.
Thank you Suzanne. Any other, any other questions?
Not specifically on this subject, but we have another one, so.
Okay.
I'll, I'll still be, I'll still be here. Thank you.
All right, sounds good. Justin, anyone else on the call? Okay, um, all right, so I think she had a hand up for what we were just talking about. So if there's more to your presentation, go ahead and then we'll.
No, I'm, I'm good. I'll address any questions if I'm going to like that.
Go ahead, Jane.
Gasoline tanks. Are they, are they still in?
This property does not have any gasoline tanks that will need to be addressed with the demolition or with the future reuse. So that would not, not, not be an issue with Nine Green Street.
Only the sewage tanks. There are some, there's some tankards for, mostly with sewage that we're going to be pumping out, removing and back them with, with gravel.
Jane, do you have a comment?
I do. I actually want to pose some dialogue here. This, the one-way section of the street, so the one that's coming off of Washington Street and going parallel to this parking lot. I'd like to get Chris's input on that. I think this may be the first time you're hearing it.
No. It's the first time we're hearing it.
Okay, well, with you guys. So you start between the rock and the hot. Safety issue. Making it a one-way, exiting onto Green Street, going to the right. Leaving. The parking lot the way it is now and trying to take a left is suicidal. There's no rest, no end, no bus. Taking a right, not a problem. Except for peak times, you know, you have to go slow and anything can happen, but taking a left, challenging.
So we're going to eliminate that? That's where everyone?
Well, but this is where the property owners may have an issue with it, because.
But it's for safety issues, so I think.
Correct, but you know, and this is one of the things, property owners, we may not want that to actually happen. So I mean, then this is where, I've been apprised of it, I've been involved in this for a year and a half. Two of the other property owners agreeing to it. First time you are hearing of it and also the brick building, Bobby and his father, they may not agree. You know, so in what auctions they are, not sure what auctions they are. If there's an auction of property, owners can say no. Or if the town can supersede anything and mandate it.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was going to ask. The town's actually buying the right of way, not the property.
The, the right of way actually exists with the property, all that.
Oh, so.
It's shared right of way between us and property owners.
So we all are part of it? Is that what we're saying?
There are restrictions, so they, that never get closed. That, that, that right of way, they, they open, but legally, I'm not sure. You'll never lose your access to the right of way. The right of way is there and it's for all four properties to use. It'll never disappear. It can never be blocked off. It can never be removed. But looking at the safety factor for everybody included, property owners, business owners, the tenants, for them to go out the back way onto Green Street to the traffic light is a safer approach. It's hard to argue that fact. On the other side, no offense to the town. Would you want the town telling you what, you are allowed to do with your property? And once it turns, you're never going to ring a bell. Once it's made a one-way, it's going to stay a one-way and that's the way it is. So it's, you know, it's up for conversation and consideration. I mean, they have one idea. Doesn't mean it's going to stick. Doesn't mean it can't be worked on and tweaked.
Al, the decision on, on one-way, two-way, or any decision on the flow of traffic along that right of way does not impact the demolition? Okay, so we can move forward on the demolition, so this as a, as an open question. Um, I think we, we want to hear the concerns. We're, James, that's why you brought it up. And I, my note was that we have the right people here in the room to have this conversation right now, so I'm glad we're having it. I just want to be clear that it does not hold up the demolition plans that we have in place, okay? So then the next question is, is we, we hear that there, there are other voices to be heard. One of them's not here tonight. Okay, there's concerns about the property owners, um, uh, any restrictions placed on the property owners' use of their own property. Uh, but we also have safety concerns and overall traffic flow in the area that we're trying to address as well. So I'm going to turn to the town administrator for, for a minute and, and ask, is there town council input that helps to direct this, this conversation in the future? It's, it's very much an open question. I, I don't want anybody in the room thinking that a decision's been made. That's why we're holding this hearing to, to understand. Uh, and I'm only asking the town administrator for, um, is there a role for town councils on how to move forward with the right of way and decisions made around it?
I can certainly move in town council. I think, you know, one of the components, um, I think we just want to discuss all the options with everybody in the room, right? I think one, one thing that was mentioned is that, you know, rather than a one-way, does a no left turn? Right, is that, those types of conversations, but I, I can certainly look in town council to get his opinion on the, you know, what it sounds like those, those back to the eighteen hundreds, so.
It does sound tricky.
I'm sure, uh, I'm sure Jane would love to, to read up on it. We, uh, you know, we're not paying it by the hour anymore, so might as well.
If this, I mean, if there's a value to helping clarify how we're going to make the decision on, on what the best use for all parties involved, that does sound right out of the gate like there's people, but, yeah, John.
I have two, I have a question and a comment if I could. A question to Al. When the demolition occurs, is there any risk to, uh, the surrounding neighborhood or individuals as the building's coming down, contaminants or anything like that? As you pointed out, directly across the street is a children's playground. There's a business right there. Anything that.
We have provisions in the contract documents that will require the contractor to eliminate any airborne dust from leaving the site. So they have misters typically on their equipment that will keep everything wet so that we don't have dust leaving. We also have a requirement that all asbestos and regulated building materials are removed before general demolition occurs.
Is there asbestos in the building?
About thirty-five to forty, thirty-five thousand dollars worth of asbestos, mostly tiles, mostly what they call non-priable asbestos. I think the priable asbestos is something that is really kind of precious in your hands, is minimal. I think it's just a small.
And how long will the demolition take in terms of time, from your information?
Well, I think it's about a thirty day process if you have a person, uh, ready to go. But the reason that I mentioned a couple of times earlier that I'd like to offer a sixty day time for performance only because it may open it up to more contractors who might be available during that sixty day period. They may start at day thirty-one and go and finish at day sixty.
I was just going to say, um, due to the asbestos conversation, and I know, I know that the youth population is probably not watching the select board live, but we really need people to stop climbing on the building, those types of things. We've had to deal with that. Uh, the police have been called on, on children, younger adults accessing the roof and then trying to climb in. And we've also had an issue with somebody parking too close and having debris fall off the building. So we've had issues with it, right? That's why the demolition was important time-wise, um, before the sort of final flow was determined. Um, there are more times, I think, where we would like this building gone.
Sorry, I was just going to make my comment. Um, I would state that when it comes to the right of way and the access, I'm a hundred percent with the private property owners. I would not want anything to do with the town directing them out of handles, the right of way and the exit onto Washington Street. Their rights come far in question. So if they're all for it, then I'm for it. If they're not for it, then I'm not for it.
I, I'm assuming that there is a plan that, that the property, because it's a, it's generally a four feet into a six foot drop.
That's correct. Yeah, we have a, we have a given conditions plan, chosen property. In fact, I think the property is shown on this. We have elevation one ninety-four here and elevation two hundred, uh, degrees. So your height is about sixty feet, changing elevation.
Al, could you just describe the, the screening that you, you mentioned in one of our meetings, the screening, uh, to view, like the view of the construction site when the demolition's happening?
Okay, uh, when we do these projects, we create, we, um, limit access in public to the work. Okay, uh, when we do these projects, we create, we, um, limit access in public to the work area. So, there'll be a temporary construction fence that will be erected along, uh, Green Street up here. Uh, within that will be a screen, it's like, uh, you would see around a tennis court, it's like a green mesh that is secured to the chain-linked fence. And that will just prevent, uh, or minimize, uh, airborne dust from getting by, even though we're gonna be controlling it with the water. But it also creates a visible barrier, so that people aren't, you know, distracted too much. Uh, even though you can see through it a little bit, it's still a, a pretty good barrier.
And also, only on the Green Street side or?
No, it'll probably go around the entire site, although there is a, there's a, with this here.
Yeah.
Uh, so we may be able to rely upon that. We'll probably get signage up to say, you know, no press has, that sort of thing. And then there'll probably be one here. The other thing I wanted to mention is, once the building is down, you're going to have roughly a four-foot drop by from, uh, street level down to the basement, so it's gonna be four or five feet. So, we'll have to create some type of, like, chain-linked fence or something from there here, so we don't have a fall hazard. So, let's secure the site after we do the demolition.
Now, there'll be signage that's there, office material?
Um, there will be during the asbestos demolition phase, yes. It'll, it'll be mostly placed on the access to the building, and the people will be restricted from going into the building, uh, unless they have a, a respirator and a, a fit range and they're appropriately trained with appropriate credentials.
Alright, well, did that end up, end your presentation, Al?
Um, unless there are questions, um.
And James, you had brought up that, well, on the one-way street was on the one-way option possibility. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, I think we covered everything.
Okay. Any other questions from the Zoom call? Anyone here in the room? We have two of the three abutters, property owners, so if, if we could ask that you communicate amongst yourselves on, on your thoughts on it and just be open and, um, in communication with the town administrator's office. As we stated, there is no decision today for future reuse, we're sharing the, the proposal. The only plans that were decided, that have been decided upon is the demolition plan. Um, but it would be very important to have your input and, uh, your thoughts on the changes to that right of way, so.
But going back.
No, go ahead, I was just gonna say, um, I'll leave these boards here, so.
Yeah, someone comes in and wants to have a look.
You know, like John brought up the question about following and maintaining the maintenance. Wouldn't be something I wouldn't be too heartbroken over losing, I can tell you that.
I'm probably a little horse-traded.
Well, and that's the thing, he, you know, it's deciding, once you guys put both feet in, or once we take both feet out, it's making sure, it's like, hey, you know, there, it's not a dead-end road, it's a negotiating road. And it's looking, it's like, you know, what is, you know, safety issue, we have hard safety issues in the downtown corridor. And it's trying to make it as simple as possible, and sometimes it's not achieved.
Yeah, I mean, our, our role is the environmental and civil design, but the top professionals is to point out, you know, that that is in a safe condition. And our recommendation is to make that a right turn only, and we have that a one-way street.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, honestly, making, having it a left turn, we should probably remove another parking spot right there by the telephone pole for better visibility. So then now we're crossing the line, how many more spots in the downtown Route sixteen corridor do we wanna lose, 'cause we've lost? And even, and even removing a parking space, that's not enough. Exactly.
Al, at some point, we had talked about signage. We don't need to get into that tonight, but I think as we move forward to what the future reuse looks like for this, this area, that, it's, it's an opportunity to show the signage, because it, in terms of improving safety, communication, directing the flow of traffic, I think benefits everybody, like, do this, don't do that, kind of thing. Uh, and I know that there was a discussion on that, so.
I can give you a little, like, an eight, how, by eleven sheet of paper that shows the signage, what it would be and where they'd be located.
But I will say that it's safer. I have a lot of customers that go off the back way. 'Cause, and I mean, the building's been abandoned for, I can't tell you, eight years now. And I've been plowing that back lot to keep it open the whole way and re-graveling. You know, because come one of the time the plow hits, soon as the blade hits the ground, all the gravel's on the edges. And then pulling it back, you gotta be gentle, because you got the creek right there and you don't wanna disturb too much of it, even though we've disturbed it with the plow by pushing the granite up, the stone towards the creek. So, I mean, but, it is safer for some people. You know, I still go out there, but also when I'm leaving, it's not a fine time. You're looking at commuter traffic from four to six-thirty. It's not advisable. You should not take a left turn out of there, 'cause something could happen.
Right. And you're, you're correct, I think, in stating that the downtown corridor is tricky, whatever decision you make.
Oh, it is. I mean, we've been battling this for many years, on how to make it safer.
So, we're happy to have your input, hope to have more of it, hope to get the voices of the other property owners in the area.
Yeah, there's only one other gentleman, which, you know, I have no idea if they even know.
What is his name?
His son's name is Bob.
He would've received notice of this tonight.
Yeah, we would've pulled it from the assessor's office, but I mean, that's whoever's of record, if his son is in charge.
The one that bought it's Bob Mercer, uh, from Mercer years ago.
Property owner would've received notice of this tonight, so they, okay, alright, so I think.
We can try to track it down?
Yeah, yeah, it's the voice we just gave you wanna hear from, for sure. Alright, Al, thank you very much for the presentation. James, thanks for your input, and, uh, we're gonna move on on the agenda, unless there are other comments or questions?
I would just, uh, if, if people are comfortable with the sixty-day, um, that Bob has, excuse me, I got Bob in my mind, that Al has, uh, has outlined, um, it, it just, you know, sort of consensus with that, it would obviously impact the finances, it would impact the timing as well, so, so long as you're comfortable with that, that would be sort of the only thing I'd be looking for this evening.
An indication from the board on the sixty-day demolition?
Perfect idea.
Yes, that's a fantastic.
What, what I would say is that the construction would be completed before Thanksgiving, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Do we, do we take a motion to close the hearing?
Yes, Liz.
Take a motion to close the hearing relative to the presentation from Harry Group on.
Alright, we'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Al, for coming in.
Neighbor's last name Nichols.
Nichols?
Nick Nichols.
Thank you.
Yeah, Nichols.
Thanks for coming in.
Took me a moment.
Thank you.
Alright, so we're gonna move on to no, agenda item number four, which is the CARES Act, ARPA programmatic, um, update. The room is filled, but we are missing our number one guy on this agenda item, um, so Travis, are you providing the update, or are we, like, just going with the agenda packet, which is there are no new requests for?
Um, so, I, I'll just give a quick update, if you don't mind, and then in case there's any questions on it as well, um, just reiterate what went out, which is a memo from the ARPA steering group, including communication, information for the ARPA steering group, so, um, the communication went out to all departments, boards and committees, and then was sent to all organizations by posting, um, the notice on our Facebook page and the Hollison reporter. Um, the guidance was, was added to the, the distribution, and then also the, the memo from the ARPA steering group, which includes the contact information, email address, includes a link to a Google form. Um, I think, you know, there have been people who've called, uh, me to ask questions related to sort of the ARPA guidance, but then, you know, one of the easiest ways to sort of see is an idea that you may have applicable, would be to open that Google form that we've provided to make a request to the ARPA steering group, which then has criteria where you have to check at least one for it to be applicable to ARPA, um, to see if the idea may be applicable. But, um, at this point, most of the questions that have come to the ARPA steering group are, are really in the magnitude of, of, you know, or, excuse me, are in the realm of what is the magnitude of the funding? The answer is that we are expecting four point four million dollars, um, over the timeframe, which is essentially three fiscal years and a little bit beyond, depending on if it's a capital project. Um, again, the ARPA steering at Hollison dot K twelve dot MA dot US is the place to send any of your questions. Um, the chief and I have, uh, discussed with the ARPA steering group potentially posting a meeting of Q and A's in case people wanna come on and ask questions, uh, although again, anybody can do that through the email. Um, and so, really, the, the internal meeting of, of the steering group to talk about scheduling and, and how this all looks, um, was really also to reiterate the fact that the ARPA steering group would like anybody, um, to make a request, a law that is applicable, um, based on those, those, uh, criteria, because, uh, they can't consider it if their request isn't made. Um, and so that's kind of where we are with that. If anybody needs that communication, I can resend it, we'll, we'll probably do that periodically. We've asked that the initial wave, um, come in by August second, understanding that people are away on vacation, that is not the, the last opportunity to request ARPA funding, but that is the first time where the ARPA steering group will sort of, um, I will present them with everything that's come in at that point.
Okay. Uh, you know, I've got a question, I'm gonna jump the line, you're not using email, I'm gonna ask it directly. Regular salaries cannot be paid with ARPA funding?
I don't know that I would agree with that. I think, I think certainly one of the things that the ARPA steering group will have to consider is if we take on regular salaries as a response, right, whether it be, uh, mental health, right, which is one of the components, criteria of public health, uh, if it be economic development, which is one of the components, um, whether it be impacting, uh, affected communities, or populations, excuse me. If we were to take on regular salaries, that we would consider potentially carrying on beyond the life of ARPA funding? Um, that that's something that certainly the ARPA steering group would have to consider.
Okay. And when we talk about regular salaries and you're, you're sort of holding out there for facts, you don't wanna say absolutely no. There are regular salaries for physicians that are in response to, uh, the COVID pandemic and recovery from, impact from and recovery from?
Yes and no. I mean, I think the only, the, one of the things I said today to, to somebody who was asking general questions was, where, where CARES was very, um, in response to COVID, ARPA leaves open how to get the community beyond the impacts of COVID, right? So, economic development, well, how are we sparring ourselves beyond, right? And, and how is that, how are we, um, not necessarily this was created by COVID, but also COVID presents this opportunity, right? Think of, um, some of the things that we've done in terms of, uh, Zoom meetings and those types of things. Um, but beyond that, what do, what do, what do we now see as possibilities for the community to, to advance ourselves? Um, you know, it, it is a little bit broader than the CARES was, which was very, you know, purposely reactionary.
Okay, okay, alright, thank you. Any questions about ARPA or comments?
I, I do have questions, but I'm, sorry.
Uh, just, Mike sent me an email.
I'm not sure.
Um, just wanted to point out, no new cases since last week, we're at one active case, a single home, single-family home. They're continuing to monitor CDC, the mass DPH surveillance data, the Delta variant. Some countries are seeing an almost vertical growth in new cases. Some of the spike is explained by testing, some is related to transmission in areas with low VAC rates. Uh, the Delta is something that obviously a lot of people are talking about, but so far, nothing here, so thank you.
And no CARES Act requests for this, please for the board to consider?
No, uh, I think we all saw some evidence from, from Travis, with the transfer of the school expenses went through and CARES tracking sheet was fulfilled at this point, I guess is the right way to put it.
Right, so, the school committee has not met again since they made that request. Um, and so, if they have any questions, obviously, keep the day, we'll, we'll update the school committee. Um, and if they have any questions, I'll bring them back to you, uh, or messages from the school committee after that request. But, the, the math essentially works the way that, uh, chief presented it to you last week. I was requested that, um, you know, we put together a, what did we do with the one point three? Um, I have one iteration of that, I just want the chief to, to sort of bless it and then the, the select board, and then we'll get it out to the community. Um, you know, some of those are, we are continuing to do the, the two times a day high-touch cleaning service, and, and that's part of our finances, but in the end, in, you know, we can look at what happened through the one point three, how did we split that out? Um, you know, how were residents directly affected through rent, mortgage relief, meal delivery, those types of things? What did we do technology-wise? What did the school do beyond S or one, two and three? Um, and so I'm working on that, and that should be ready by next week.
Okay. That'll be an agenda item, you'll present after that?
We'll do it through this, yeah.
Alright, so, um, two questions, um, basically, uh, change of flow chart for ARPA here. Um, my first question is, is who determines if it's an ARPA eligible, eligible expense? Is it gonna be the steering group, is it you, or is it self-determined?
I'd love it to be self-determined.
I, I, I knew it would be, it probably would be.
No, I think, I'm, I'm very, um, hesitant to put too much back on Chief Cassidy's shoulders after he's having him shoulder most, much of CARES. I think, um, I think the way that the ARPA steering group is, is to have the select board member, the school committee member, with us, and then the finance committee member, but then also staff, um, and so Chief Cassidy, myself and the superintendent, right? And so, depending on the area, uh, I think it'll probably be a bit of divide and conquer in terms of determining it. If there's any question, Chief Cassidy or myself, or, um, the superintendent, you know, in example, right, I would reach out to, right? If there was a question in our mind, if it was applicable, Chief Cassidy or I could reach out to DLS. If it was on the school side, the superintendent could reach out to DESSY.
Right.
So, um, you know, there, there's probably gonna be a few of those. I'm, I'm hoping that we'll get some creative ideas that may require us to, to ask some questions. Um, but, uh, I think that's the way we'll have to approach it. And that flow chart, again, is a work in progress, um, that we would like to, to promote when people are comfortable with it, but it's not been yet.
Okay. And, um, my, my second question is sort of related to sort of the accounting, 'cause I mean, what we had before with CARES was basically, you know, the chief was kinda keeping track of what everything was going on and stuff like that. And, um, my question here is, just, so is the ARPA steering group, um, are there, are they basically, is actually, is the intention is that the ARPA steering group would also be tracking the expenses that have been put against ARPA, they would be making sure, so they would be making decisions based on the availability of funds as well, or not just simply saying, like, this is a good project, you figure it out, kind of thing?
Yeah, so, uh, not to get into the nitty-gritty, but.
Yeah, don't get too detailed, but just.
One of the things that, that chief essentially tracked was the encumbrances, right, of the vote of the select board, right? But if you think about it in terms of ARPA, we're getting into capital fund, we're getting into capital projects as well. So, if you think about the way that we go into a town meeting, for example, right, we go from an appropriation into a capital project, it might be coming from CPC, it might be coming from tax dollars, it might be coming from free cash. Um, and then we have on accounting the ability to set up its own capital project, which then tracks its own finances. We're gonna need to do that in these instances. Because the way ARPA allows is that funding may go through twenty twenty-four, for example, but then allow for a capital project's accounting to go through twenty twenty-six. So, we will, if, if the select board approves of a capital project under ARPA, from the ARPA steering group's recommendation, we would set up that capital project under the umbrella of ARPA, which we could then track simultaneously within ARPA, right? So, um, it will be very heavy on the, the town accountant, it'll be very heavy on the staff within the ARPA steering group to make sure that that is all being tracked, um, very well. And, and I believe, uh, having brought our auditors in on that call with S and P, that, uh, they're interested to see that, that we do it. Um, but they, you know, I think we all have the, the general idea of how it'll work on paper.
Okay, great, thank you, appreciate the conversation. I'm off.
Okay. So, we jumped around a little bit there on CARES Act and ARPA, back and forth between the two. Is there anyone on the Zoom call who has a question or comments in, on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on then. We have no motions, no, no, uh, requests to consider there, just updates, so, uh, on to, uh, town warrants.
We have two warrants this evening, uh, the first is for FY twenty-one, total of two hundred forty thousand, two hundred fifty-one dollars and eighty-one cents. Motion to approve that warrant out.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Second warrant, it's FY twenty-two, for six hundred fifty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-six cents. Motion to approve that one. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in. Carry that, carry, so that's it for the warrants. We're gonna move on to public comments. John?
Uh, just wanted to again congratulate American Legion on, uh, relatedly celebrating their one other anniversary this weekend, where they sponsored the laser show at Goodwill Park. It was a phenomenal night. I believe Robbie Blair thought that the number total, over eight hundred people in attendance.
Oh, wow.
Um, they filled the, they filled the field, which is a little wet, by the way, from the rain, but, uh, the show was incredible, um, and very cool. I think they're talking about maybe incorporating something like that into the, uh, uh, three-hundredth anniversary celebration for Hollison down the road. So, look forward to hearing more about that. And I know you folks, uh, forgive me if you're, if I'm stealing any of your thunder, but. And I know you folks, forgive me if you're, if I'm stealing any of your thunder, but, um, I wanted to read this from Mike Cassidy relative to the hazardous waste collection day. Uh, it was a very successful household hazardous waste collection on Saturday. Thanks to Donna Muggie, Matt Zetic, Bob Nemitz, George Marini, and Rick Muggie for their time and energy that morning. Also thanks to Clean Harbors for a smooth event and the schools for hosting on the Woodland Street campus. So apparently everything went well. I believe they, uh, they were able to handle all of the requests that came in that day. So thanks to them and appreciate it very much.
So this year we went from nine to twelve to eight to twelve. We added an hour, I remember that in the.
At the beginning, yeah.
Yeah, we will, we will continue to do that. Um, moving forward, based on, we weren't looking for this year to prove that we needed it. Um, so I'm anticipating that you'd see, uh, have an eight to twelve next year as well.
Yeah, so.
Something changes the plan.
One of the, one of the reasons that we did that was in the past, we've had to turn people away at the end. Um, we sort of discussed that in the budget context, make sure that the budget would not be a concern, that residents were able to bring them. But then there was a concern that, uh, you know, if we saw the same uptick in use as we have seen over the past year during COVID of solid waste, that, um, we may, uh, run out of capacity within the truck where all of the things get loaded by the third-party vendor. And luckily that was not the case, but we were, um, you know, the, one of the ideas was to have a more extended period of times. People have the larger window, but then, you know, there was still that concern. So luckily that was not an issue and I would, I would anticipate that we continue this beyond. Because I think in five of seven years, I I think, you know, there was, there were people who had to be turned away and sent to a neighboring town in the future. This would make, you know, a time where that wasn't the case, but we want to keep that streak going now.
Okay, great. Okay. Thank you. Um, Ben, any public comments?
Uh, no, not really.
Okay, um, so I would like to point out and thank our IT, uh, staff for what tonight is, which is the five hundredth meeting since we've had, um, the start of remote participation. So a heartfelt thank you for five hundred meetings worth of of your energy and effort. And, um, yeah, anybody looking to catch up on town governance over the past year and a half, you've got many, many hours of, um, binge watching that you can enjoy. Uh, and then Travis, I'm actually going to turn this one to you because I think your office field did some calls in regard to the July fifth holiday, not holiday, regular trash pickup, but holidays for some, not everybody. So you received some calls. Can you just speak to how they were resolved?
Right. So one of the things was, obviously, um, we use Harvey, EL Harvey's, um, for trash pickup. One of the things that was notified to us this year is that because the holiday was on Sunday, um, the question was, would they observe it on Monday? They said that they would keep their normal pickup schedule, uh, and they asked us to to get that out to the community. So we used our normal sources. The select board meeting, we read it multiple times, which gets picked up in the Holliston reporter. I think we put in the Holliston reporter directly as well and we use Facebook. Um, I think there was a a good number of people, I would say, and I think this goes back to our earlier conversation with the candidates for the ATA, who would be a public information officer as well for the town. Um, a a fair amount of feedback we got was essentially, we didn't get that message. Um, I would say at least two also, if not more, and this is through obviously the town administrator and and select board staff fielding the call in the clerk's office as well, um, that they felt that the message should have been sent out, um, via our reverse nine-one-one call, the blackboard system. Um, we intentionally did not do that. I think there, you know, there can be instances where people essentially, there is feedback that please don't use this for a non-emergency. Um, and so we do use it sparingly, but that was essentially the message. So the the idea was, we we ask Harvey's, you know, we have quite a bit of people, especially in certain areas, um, and their response was, you know, we can't do a a trip back. But, you know, if if there are people who are a bit overflowing this week, um, that they can be as as lenient as possible, as best that they were able to do.
Okay, okay. Um, do you have a sense that that satisfies the residents' concerns? We can't go back in time and change the message, but in terms of those residents who called to say that they have trash that's overflowing the barrel, this would satisfy that?
I I don't know. I mean, I I think it can be very, um, you know, it's happened to me in another town with a private hauler, right? It's just difficult to manage, especially because of the rain when people have left things out and those types of things and and that. You know, I I think it is certainly reading the contract and and working with Harvey's, I think that they are doing the best they can. They certainly asked us to message it and we did our best. I think it's also a learning opportunity to say, sometimes when we feel like we're messaging this out on all of our platforms, we do need to be looking for enhancements to that.
Okay, okay.
I think that would certainly be the takeaway from this week.
Okay, okay.
If I could, I couldn't agree with you more. I think when you think about today's citizen, what what they use to gain information is the phone. And we need to be in that space earlier this season. We need to be somebody who, um, you know, is a public information officer. Hopefully going to build a platform so that we can communicate more regularly and hopefully with all the citizens. Because right now, we we're just not there, you know? Um, with the tools that he had, he did the best he could, but we didn't reach all of them.
Yes, right, right.
You've got to get better.
Right, yeah, it's a it's a communication thing as opposed to servicing. The service is there. There's no disruption service. He doesn't communicate it out to meet the expectations of of many of the residents that call.
Yeah, I mean, this will come up in a number of different areas. If we become more proficient communicating to greater numbers of Holliston residents upon that kind of a platform, we'll be all better off for it.
All right. So in terms of public comments from anyone on the Zoom call, I see one hand up. And Suzanne, why don't you go ahead and if you still have your comments, please introduce yourself, your address again and, uh, your check say.
Hi, good evening. Suzanne Edelman, forty-six South Street. And, um, I am looking for some sort of an update regarding the heavy commercial vehicle exclusion on South Street. We're very anxious to see where that's going. Uh, enjoyed seeing Woodland Street very much, but wondering when it's going to happen on South Street. So can anyone tell us what to expect?
So Travis is the is our point of contact for communication with Mass DOT, so I'm going to hand it over to Travis.
Sure. So that was my my number one comment under number seven, so, uh, we can do that now. The, uh, District Three, which is who we're in, um, which is where the the town of Holliston sits within the Mass DOT system, uh, has completed their analysis of our request and has now passed that on to Boston. Uh, using the Woodland experience that we went through, I would say that we are probably now, um, somewhere between two to three weeks away from, um, hearing an official word. I think that, um, you know, we we certainly submitted more than one. I would say that South Street was the strongest applicant of all of those. And, um, I would say that hopefully, within probably two weeks, I'll have, uh, an agenda item for the select board um, once District Three's recommendations to Boston become public.
Okay.
Any follow-up, any follow-up for that, Suzanne?
Um, I don't think so. I think we're just trying to be patient. And, um, you know, my next question is, does anyone know whether Hopping Brook Industrial Park has a twenty-four-seven? Uh, is, are those are hours now that 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 they're allowed to take in trucks at all hours of the night? Because at this point, at this point, they're coming in at three o'clock in the morning, they're coming in at four o'clock in the morning. And you can hear them. Of course, they're coming down South Street often, but they're also coming down Washington Street and then up Hopping Brook. So I was under the impression it was not a twenty-four-hour operation, yet the trucks are coming in at all hours. So does anyone have a definitive answer as to what the hours for Hopping Brook are?
I'll have to email, uh, I can get an answer for it.
We we can get you an answer, so, um, if you could contact Travis.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah. Suzanne, I thought that.
How we would. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I thought Web, I thought Web Industries had a period of time in which they were working twenty-four hours. They were producing supplies for the response to the pandemic. And I thought they had a a period of time where they were twenty-four-seven, but I can't confirm that. So if you could, Travis, and he could get back to you with an answer on.
They're twenty-four hours a day within the building, so not outside the building. They shouldn't be doing anything outside the building, including bringing in trucking. They are allowed to operate inside the building. So I'm just curious what the, you know, this isn't really enforceable. But they're 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 trucking in at four o'clock in the morning, they're leaving at eleven o'clock at night. So I'm just curious to know what what the agreement is. But I guess my main, my main conversation tonight is, you know, uh, what's up, what's up with South Street? How many more months do we need to wait? But I'm looking forward to an answer. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
So I think we have another thing from Travis that's, okay, thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Two to three, you're welcome. Two to three weeks on potentially hearing back on the HCVE, the heavy commercial vehicle exclusion for South Street. And Suzanne can email you directly, you can look, get an answer to, for her, to her question about who has a permit to operate twenty-four-seven.
Yeah, I'll have to talk to the land use group downstairs.
Okay.
Uh, it may be, um, permit by permit. Um, but if there are those that have, uh, the ability to operate twenty-four-seven, I'm sure they'll stand out when I ask the question, so I'll get an answer.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Take care. Anybody else have public comments? Okay, so close, excuse me, closed public comment, move on to the town administrator, who is one item briefer.
Uh, right. And so I I would say I I understand absolutely. Um, I've been gone through a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion request on Woodland and and the process is very long. But I would say that, um, specifically Lori Shattuck at Mass DOT has been very responsive. Um, and and in terms of the way that Mass DOT moves, I feel like they are moving as quickly as they can. So, um, you know, I'm appreciative of of the support that we've gotten and and also, uh, the role that Senator Spilka and Rep. Dykema's office have played, uh, in where we are to date. Um, the other things I'll I'll sort of mention, um, just kind of getting, you know, a schedule, uh, outlook from the board. We did do a six-month update, um, after my start time, so that was mid-January. Um, a year comes up essentially a week from now from when I started. Um, if the board would like, uh, a similar update, um, we want to sort of wait until we have an ATA. Um, I've given, you know, we've sort of looked at the things that we have coming up. Some of them we're waiting on, Stan Tech, for example, on the sidewalk to give us a date on on that. We had PAR this evening, so we're sort of cycling through. But if that's something the board would want, I could try to get that next week or the week after.
I mean, the six-month update was was good. I think it highlighted the good work that you're doing, so an opportunity for you to do the same, sure. However, candidly, I don't think you need anything more on your plate at this point in time. And we are close to having an ATA in in position to help you, assist you, enlighten, hopefully, your load a little bit. And so I'm inclined to wait until the ATA is is in place, but, um, interested to hear what John and Ben have to say on that.
Agreed. Absolutely. I think you can wait.
Yeah, so why don't we push it out to, uh, a year and a month?
Okay. Um, and with that, this is more for, uh, people who have been asking, uh, the idea at the moment. Uh, the the town meeting date previously had been posted, uh, for ten twenty-five. Select board voted to to repost for ten eighteen pursuant to Article Ten of the the May, uh, annual town meeting. So October eighteenth will be our our special town meeting this year. Um, on a timeline that puts us most likely opening the warrant in early August with a close in mid, um, to late September. I I don't know, the the twentieth, I think, uh, somewhere in that mid to late range. Um, uh, it has begun to take shape. There are certainly people, uh, interested in in getting on that. Um, and so, uh, for those asking, and, um, you know, I may do it soon and later, just so that everybody has clarity. The October eighteenth special town meeting, the warrant, uh, will be opening, um, I I suppose late July, early August through, um, mid to late September.
Okay, and because it's a change, um, we need to clarify a few times, it's the fall town meeting, not a special town.
I'm sorry. Fall town meeting.
Oh, no, we all need to remind you. It's the new, new way to travel it.
Fall town meeting. Please, the clerk has a question.
Okay, yes, please.
Are we still under, uh, comments from the town administrator?
We are.
Yeah, ask if you're, uh, prepared to give the citizens an update on the FY twenty-two state budget that was passed and what it means for Holliston.
Absolutely. The, uh, state budget, um, in terms of state aid direct to Holliston, uh, was what we expected. Uh, in the conference committee, there were some some small tweaks to state aid, nothing, nothing substantial. Um, there were some, um, specific items for Holliston, if that's what you're referring to for the items. Um, I can pull that up right now. Um, one of the, uh, from the list essentially that, uh, the select board worked with interested parties on, um, one of the items was Goodwill Park, which is a request that we've had previously. Um, and so, uh, in the FY twenty-two budget, the legislator, uh, excuse me, the legislature voted Friday, July ninth. Um, the Chapter Seventy, funding and local aid, um, came in as we had anticipated, which again was a solid number that we were able to build our FY twenty-two budget on, um, without the fluctuations that we saw last year. Um, in addition to that, there are some particular, uh, items of interest for Holliston. Thirty thousand dollars for the American Legion Post Forty-Seven to support the construction of a monument, Veterans of Operation Enduring Freedom and Operation Iraqi Freedom. A hundred thousand dollars for improvements to Goodwill Park. Um, and let's see, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars for the Holliston Drug and Alcohol Awareness Coalition. And three hundred fifty thousand dollars for mental health services in Metro West Schools. Um, and so obviously, as I mentioned previously, uh, as always helpful to the town of Holliston, uh, Senator Spilka and Rep. Dykema in these, um, for example, for when people say, when is that check arriving for Goodwill Park? That will be subject to appropriation and we will work, um, with our representatives to, uh, make sure that we get that funding and we get those projects going.
Okay, thank you.
And one last item, this Wednesday is the first meeting of the Comprehensive Long Range Plan Committee, Wednesday night at seven o'clock. The EDC meets at six-thirty, um, so I'll hop on with them and I'll have to hop off. I will lead the Comprehensive Long Range Plan Committee until they, uh, are able to, um, form a, uh, a chair clerk, uh, role, uh, if not more. Um, but so seven PM on July fourteenth, Wednesday night, the Comprehensive Long Range Plan Committee will kick off. The agenda is posted online. Um, we will go through, at the very least, uh, the existing vision, um, which is available, um, uh, to that group and and will be made available. We'll do that by Zoom, um, and so I'll be sharing, uh, some information with them. And we'll see if they may choose a chair at that point. It may take a couple of meetings before they're able to organize themselves, um, so I'll be with them as long as necessary.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Travis?
That's it.
All right. So, uh, move on to board business. We have two items, I believe, in the, we're just packing there.
We do. The first is a one-day alcoholic beverage license, uh, from the Alcohol Enthusiast LLC, uh, crafty, for wine and beer sales, uh, for their July food and music events, be held July seventeen, twenty-twenty-one, from twelve PM to three PM at Acadia Farms, two fifty-eight Woodland Street.
So a motion to approve the one-day alcoholic beverage license, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second is to, uh, make a motion to approve the meeting minutes, it's June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excuse me. So we're good there. Any other board business? Nothing listed, so we're going to move on then to other business in Travis. I think you said you have some lineup and transfers for us to discuss.
I do. I have three. I'll bring them down on the clerk and then, um, I have to speak off the top of my head because I only have that copy. Um, so one, uh, the first one is one that we discussed previously, which is sixty thousand dollars for solid waste. Uh, I did do the calculation on what we can take from CARES. Um, essentially what I'm asking for here is a safety mechanism. Uh, we have until July fifteenth to make these transfers. We do not have all of the bills in yet. Um, I do have, uh, uh, an analysis, which I'll bring to you just for your own records on on what I think that the CARES I can absorb. Um, but I think at this point, there is no harm, no foul to move sixty thousand dollars to solid waste, um, from the benefits budget. If we don't end up needing to use it, it will flow to free cash as it would if we didn't touch it. Um, there are two other also requests that came in today from HPD as they got some bills after their initial request. Um, one is for supplies related to two police officers and one is for, um, building maintenance. I know that, um, you know, Chief Stone, uh, will be with the the finance committee tomorrow. I asked him to to cover these requests, um, but, uh, at this point, they're sort of all covered within his own budget. It's it's really just some housekeeping at the end of the year. And the other point that he wanted, uh, to make is that a a number of them have to do with not just, uh, the closeout of FY twenty-one, but really what needed to be done in terms of juggling the end of FY twenty into twenty-one in the midst of COVID. Um, that's really, in his mind, the genesis of a lot of this. Also to, um, Mr. Cronin's point from two weeks ago when we did transfers. Um, these these transfers will be, would would, uh, under the new paradigm of the way the budget was voted in FY twenty-two, still be necessary? Because they are moving from the bucket of personnel to what is now a sort of other expenses, um, which is just the way that that budget, uh, sort of shook out this year.
Okay. So one for the solid waste budget and two for Holliston, please.
I'll make a motion to transfer sixteen thousand dollars, um, to the, uh...
I'll make a motion to transfer $60,000 from the, where, from benefits attraction. From the health insurance line to the trash removal sign, uh, as a result of increased, well, very cost. Second, man.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to transfer $11,550 from dispatchers line to police line for purchase of services, including outstanding building maintenance invoices, medical expenses for two new police officers.
A motion, do you have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and there was a second with HPD.
Make a motion to transfer $3,060 from the dispatchers line to police line, supplies associated with two new police officers, clothing, ammunition, and supplies.
Okay, a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Those both carry, or all three carry. Thank you, Travis. Nice job off the top of your head there.
I wrote a couple notes.
Yes. Okay. So we are done with other business unless Ben or John has something they want to add. I have nothing. Okay. All right. So what we're going to do is, and you guys, first time going into executive session, so, um, correct me if I'm wrong. We're going to leave, uh, the meeting open. We're going to recess into, we're going to move-
We'll adjourn to executive session and not return.
All right. We're going to adjourn to executive session and we will not be returning to open meeting. So I will entertain the motion first is to adjourn and then to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session for reason number six of the test real property. I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye. My full aye.
And Tina, aye. Thank you very much, Allison. We will see you next Monday evening.